To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its name.
In fact, you may be seated. You're all calling everybody.
Mr. Jeter, District One.
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Heron, District Three. Mr. Baricki, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Mann, District Five.
Here.
Ms. Hood, District Six.
Here.
Ms. Addington at large.
Here.
Can we do that before? Thank you, ma'am. With that, the next item is to approve the agenda as presented to you. Do we have anything to change on the agenda to amend?
I don't have any changes.
Okay. All right, with that, we need approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
So would Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Jeter's second. Any discussion? All three of us said aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is to approve the minutes from our June twenty-eighth meeting, our budget approval meeting that day, then September the sixth. Was everybody here on both meetings? If so, we entertain a motion to approve both of those sets of minutes. Do we have a motion?
Let's go move some.
Mr. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Hood's second. Any discussion? All three of us said aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item says expression period, and I'll read this little short statement and get right into that. This is the rules for citizen expression. Citizen expression period upon the meeting when anyone who wishes to address the board, our staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, where you're from in the county, and or what organization you represent. The board mayor may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up, and we did have a couple of people that has signed up, we have no particular order. We just ask that you take turns to speak your business. Any action, we can see right after we close this expression. And we have a couple of papers. First, Mr. Chris Maynes, if you would, please. Good morning.
Morning. How are y'all doing?
Good, good.
Good, good. Morning, ladies and gentlemen of the Scott County Board Supervisors. I'm Chris Maynes. I'm running for Board Supervisors for Massona's District, District Six. But I'm not here to talk politics with you today. I'm here to talk to you about a Veterans Dinner that's being held on November the eleventh down at Duckfield Primary School. The Veterans Dinner is going to be a heartfelt tribute to brave men and women who have selflessly served our nation. It's a time for us to express our deep gratitude and show our unwavering support for these heroes who have sacrificed so much for our freedom. It's open to any veterans in the area, and they can bring a guest along, they'll be served a good meal, and be told how much that we really appreciate them and their service. The community has come together in an extraordinary way to support this. Local community organizations like the Fairview Community Center and different churches in the area have come together to provide all of the necessary manpower and food and resources like that. And Duckfield Primary School has graciously agreed to host the dinner. However, there's one final hurdle that they need to get over, is they need to purchase insurance for the event, an amount of two hundred and fifty dollars. I think that's a relatively small amount when we consider what these people have sacrificed for us and how much gratitude we want to show them. I think it's incredible the way the community has rallied together, and I figured the Board Supervisors may want to help further this event by providing the two hundred and fifty dollars needed for the insurance. I have some papers here I can pass out with the insurance quote and the place where you need to send the money. But yeah, thanks for your time and consideration of this. I can pass this out for you.
That's fine. You're welcome.
If you want, just take one. Pass it back. Appreciate it. Any questions?
Any question for Chris Maynes? All right, we'll get to it in a few minutes. Thank you. The next person that's signed up to speak is Preston Lee Pletzoff.
Morning.
Morning. How you doing?
Good. How are you?
All right. I'm Preston Pletzoff. I live down in Fairview on Lowering Six Hundred. And I was here trying to see when we might get some county water. They come within a mile three years ago and they quit on the water. So we're just wondering if their spring is absolutely quit during all this dry weather. I was just wondering when we might actually see some water down there. I mean, they come within a mile or less and they quit.
There'll be a PSA meeting next Tuesday. You might need to come be here at nine o'clock. Be the best I would think.
Yeah. We'll talk about it here in a second, though, but he's on the PSA and you weren't too right, Marshall. Both of you on the PSA, so you're talking to some people here that can't help you. But anyway, we'll talk about it more in a few minutes.
Thank you all.
Appreciate you coming.
We really need it now.
Well, is your spring plum dry right now?
Yes, it is.
Wow.
Oh, no.
Where are you, Preston? Where do you live?
Down on the Lowering Fairview, down on the Lake County line.
Do you know if Lake County has water lines near where you live?
Well, they've started putting them in, and they're all the way across what we call Flare Gap down. So to come on across Flare Gap, there'll have to be a pump station put in to push it over the ridge.
Okay, because I've talked with Mr. Dishman about this situation.
I've talked to you numerous times.
But the last time he and I talked, he suggested that Lake County might be able to do it because they would be, if they were close enough, you know, to where that... There are only about three houses, I think.
Yes, there's three houses down there, but there's nine different properties, you know. There's nine different property owners coming through there.
And they all are interested in getting water on them?
My neighbor out the road actually had a well, and his well fell in back in the ice or something. So he's got a high well now. So he has two pumps and one well. There is only three houses down in there that people live in, you know. But they run the water down certain other valleys for a mile and seven tenths for making one house. And then another place they ran it, seven tenths a mile for two that has weak end people. I just wondered when we might get some, because they was within a mile and they quit. Same way in Beach Grove. They was within a mile of the county line there and they quit. If you figure it out, if you put that mile out the bed, the contractor is going to bid it more because it's just a short section. They're going to have to consider mobilization in on both of them and everything. So that's going to make their price go up.
Okay. Will you all discuss this then at your board meeting?
Are you within a mile of where the water stops now?
Yes.
And then how far is it there to pick up the other three houses?
I'm the last one.
Oh, you're the last one.
I'm the last one, yeah.
My driveway, I can see the end of the water line. I can't get it, so if I live below the railroad, they won't come across the railroad. So there's ten houses that they can get and they won't. So I don't, you know, but my well is fine. It hasn't had any problem yet, but not have water, that's tough.
It is, yeah. I mean, we buy all the drinking water and cooking water, you know. So that runs into money every month. And the time I haul water to bathe in and wash clothes in and stuff, that costs me more a week than what most county people are paying a month for water.
I'd suggest you come next Tuesday at nine o'clock, PSA meeting. I'll be right here.
Yeah, try to do that. And can you get your neighbors to come too? I mean...
I can ask them, you know.
Well, some of, well, one of the others has called me, the Beach Grove. The Beach Grove has called about it. So I will tell her to come to that meeting too.
That just makes you wonder why they'll go a mile and seven tenths pretty much for nothing than you want for three houses, but they'll go a big one.
Between you, I don't know where you live, between where you live and where the water line ends, is there, what's between you? Is there a ridge or anything?
Nothing.
So what do you?
Try to have one little hump or whatever.
Oh, is that right?
Just one little hump.
Well, that makes a difference, you know, having to put a pump station in, all that stuff, it makes a difference. Well, the Lake County thing, I don't know if that's an option or not, but see, we've got water comes in Scott County, from Austin County, from Russell County, Wise County, and then we go into other places too where it's easier to get it, it's easier for them. It would make sense, you know, for them to do it, so.
Well, see, they come, like I say, the Lake County came to the bottom of Flare Gap Ridge, and I'm assuming they come across it, they'll have to put a pump station in.
Right.
Pumping all across the ridge.
These guys will help you, and you come back to that meeting then and see what you can get done.
I'll see if I can.
All right, well, it'll be a quick solution, I mean, a quick fix, because you need water now, it'd take a while to get it done.
Yeah, I know. I understand that, you know, but it's been three years since they quit down there.
Well, all of it's when they, they're grant funded, and they borrow money too to do these things, and they show what they're going to do as far as they can go, is what they're allowed to go, is what they put in there. Massona's way of work.
I haven't forgotten about you. I have, I've talked with Glenn Wisco about it too, but it's a different situation than we've had in some other areas, and they're not able to do it down there. And then I even talked with one of the board members of Lake County Board of Supervisors about it, and he wasn't sure. He hasn't gotten back with me. But Mr. Dishman did tell me to have people check with the Lake County Water Department.
We'll see. Be sure you come back, though.
If I can get off work.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Appreciate you coming. Anyone else wishing to speak? Come on, Miss Peggy. I knew you were going. I saw your name. I thought, well, there, come around, let me sign her up to the podium.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning.
I'm Peggy Geist from Snowflake Road. Like Bill said, oh, you're going to come and tell me about the road? Well, nothing's changed, but you all can only imagine how dusty it is now. I mean, and Mom, she had called for some dust control, but all she got was a ticket number. They came back there, but see, it's been around for quite a while. And I still would like to, for somebody, you know, to find out how we could get some money, you know, for the primary roads that don't need work, to move that money out of that road into helping with the secondary roads. And I can't get a hold of Terry Gilmore, you know. Is he, is he the one that we would need to...
It is a general family thing, it is, and I have, I have beat that a lot too, trying to get, you know, to move money out of primary road maintenance, whatever, stuff that, in my opinion, need to be done, but they wouldn't, they won't even listen to it, you know, so. But I don't know. When you see stuff being paid that don't need to be paid, spend that money somewhere, and it just falls on deaf ears, things like.
And then I thought VDOT was supposed to be here, and I was going to have a question for them. Well, maybe you all can answer it. Like, you know, we're on that six-year plan. Okay, but the problem is that you say they can't get money. Okay, we're on the six-year plan for twenty twenty-eight and twenty twenty-nine. Okay, like when that comes up, or like for the ones that's on that six-year plan now, if there's no funds, now what happens? Do we drop back to the bottom of the list or...
It's a different pot of money.
Oh. A different pot? We need to get rid of some of them pots, something. Well...
They don't go on the list now unless they're funded. So that money stays with that project.
Once it's funded, it won't go away. It's not supposed to. I take that back. Let me take that back. Down here, the Moxon Gap interchange was funded, and it went away. So you can't, I guess, go away. It's been several years ago. But the interchange was funded, and so I remember they found four and a half million dollars. How do you lose four and a half million on the study project to put that road around the bottom of the other side of the gap over there? So I don't know. I guess you can, you know, they funded it, and so I don't know.
Well, that's been my question, you know, finding money.
Yeah. Well, they found four and a half. I know it was funny because they said, how do you lose four and a half million? They had found it. I thought this would be able to get a start, you know, to get that something done with that, especially tied into Sports Complex and everything, into a new road running through there, but it went away.
Okay. Well...
VDOT will be here in November.
In November, okay.
They come quarterly.
Okay. Well, I think, I appreciate you all, appreciate all the help and any that you can do for, for anybody that lives on a dirt road.
I'm putting you in a ticket now.
Okay.
For dust control.
Okay.
Is that good?
That'd be good. See, Mom called last week, because see, she lives right on the road, like maybe from here to the wall. And people come down through there, and you'd think they wouldn't go there based on a dirt road, but it don't take much speed to be dusty.
Yeah.
And she's ninety-two years old and...
Wow.
But thank you all.
Thank you, Peggy.
See you next month.
All right, appreciate you coming. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Y'all gonna have your guns with you this morning, do your... I hope everybody's doing good this morning.
Good.
God bless everyone, eh? Two things I...
Go ahead, state your name, if you would, for your...
Oh, Fritz Thalen.
Fritz?
Fritz, F-R-I-T-C. Thalen, F-A-L-Y-N. I live in East Carter's Valley. Good place to live. I'm up here maybe for two reasons. One, might consider the speed limit, East Carter Valley. It's a, in a way, it's kind of a narrow road, especially if a tractor trailer went down through there. And we're getting more traffic, and a lot of it is coming from the Tennessee side. I guess the folks is going to work, you know, coming through there, getting on Stone Drive. We live in now is forty. And if possible, maybe ask VDOT to reduce that maybe five mile line to thirty-five. There's a church out there, a lot of senior citizens, and that area, we're all getting a bit older. And everybody seems to agree that they're going a little bit too fast through there. Especially every morning time. We've got a school bus there that stops in front of my house, and they've got a dip in that area right there. And a good school bus driver, I mean, great guy, and he's a little bit concerned too about it, because they've got to stop at the child lot through there. And coming up through the dip, you're right at where that bus stops at. I mean, he's doing a great job, and he's very careful and everybody. And might consider it, on the other end, on the Lynn Garden side, it's twenty-five, then it goes to forty. I think it would be the best hitters to the county. And the sheriff's office, they're doing a good job, and a lot of times, there's no place to turn around and confront the people that might be going a bit too fast. But if you've got one car going the speed limit, and another car speeding and it's behind it, that will give the officers time to catch up to the one that's driving a little bit too fast. You know, it's a rough area over there. But like I say, it's more traffic coming through there and the church and the senior citizens and everybody. I believe it'd be kind of a win-win situation. I think that would help the law enforcement too with that.
So just for the record, Mr. Thalen, so you got your Jackson, if you're going from here to Kingsforth on Wildo Gap, you turn around at Jackson, before you get to Jackson Market?
Yes, sir. Right, right. That's your second. Coming back, yes.
So about a, less than a quarter, about a quarter mile out there is the dip you're talking about.
Yeah, it's Hughes Peak, Arms Hollow Road, and the gentleman brought that up.
Okay.
That dip is what I call the duck ponds, you know, there's some pollen right there.
That's right.
And that afternoon, the sunshine ride into people's faces and everything. But they're right at that bus stop before...
Fritz, I know you fought this battle before, but I'm confused, because I thought when they dropped it to twenty-five, that it went farther than the state line from over Kyle Hill. Is it twenty-five from Kyle Hill to the state line?
Yes, sir. Let's say you was on the Lynn Garden side, coming toward Wildo Gap. A lot of residents in there, and it's been twenty-five for years there, which they don't even drive there. If you've been through there, you know how it is. It goes so far down through there at twenty-five, and then it bumps up to forty.
At the Virginia line?
Well, you're all the way into Virginia, but Virginia's got twenty-five, and then you come so far down, like you're coming toward Wildo, it bumps up to forty.
So you're wanting thirty-five?
Thirty-five.
From the twenty-five on two over Jackson?
If VDOT seats fit for that. And the last time that it was changed, if you go straight across on the East Carter Valley, it was thirty-five. For some reason, VDOT does the opposite thing. They raise it to forty. It kind of needs to be a uniform traffic due very good. And I do think this will help law enforcement too, and the community, and really, everybody.
And there's a subdivision right there. What's the name of that subdivision?
Right, straight across from where I live, it's Misty Morning.
Yeah, Misty Morning.
Yes, sir. Good, good people, and, you know, and I told them I'd come up here, maybe speak for them a little bit, you know.
Think about it, if it's forty, people will do forty-five or fifty.
Well, yeah.
They can go about at least five over.
And that's too fast.
But that it is. And I've drove that road not a lot, but a few times. I don't know what you're talking about, so.
I mean, it's a good area and a road. It's a pretty good road, but for that type of speed, it's a little bit narrow.
Didn't we have this on that road before?
Yeah, we had something years ago. I can't remember what it was.
Yeah, I was the one that came up there and requested that, and you all done a good job.
Well, they'll do a traffic study. The way VDOT would do that, they won't just go and do it arbitrarily. They will do a traffic study, and maybe we can get additional law enforcement too, because if it's forty, they're going to do more than forty. I'd be able to take some time if it's fifty-five, I might do fifty-eight, you know.
Yeah, we all do that. I have no different nobody else.
Yeah.
But maybe if the Board of Supervisors could step a little bit ahead of VDOT, and we don't, I don't even know how often they do the traffic study. It might be once every two year, every ten year.
They did it at our request, I think, when they prayed, when they not do that sound, if we request them to do that.
Yeah, they should.
Yeah. So let's do that, but you might want to come back in December. The VDOT people will be here.
No.
No, they'll be.
In November, sorry, next month, they'll be here, and so kind of, and I can't hear this too, and we can do that, request a traffic study, and then maybe get, maybe additional law enforcement. You got the sheriff here now, maybe they could patrol a little bit more, whatever, and help slow down.
It's a concern sometimes, that's why. A lot of times, there's no traffic light put up that'd intersect, and somebody gets hurt or killed. But, you know, there's no saying the squeaky wheel gets the grease.
Yeah. All right. Well, we do appreciate you coming. Is there something else you had?
And do you think VDOT will be here next month?
They will be. It's a quarterly thing, and they, they'll never, they'll object, but they'll be here.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, eh?
Appreciate you coming. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, we'll come out of citizen expression and talk about Mr. Maynes's request for the two hundred and fifty dollars, your office.
I don't remember ever, ever going, ever doing that as far as insurance goes, but I just wondered, Marshall, could you agree to help them out, so? I think since it's for veterans, just with the insurance, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah.
I don't know. We'd have to, we just had our meeting, so.
When is that? Is it around Veterans Day? That one's...
Veterans Day. I don't know. We'll have to bring it up in our meeting. And that's the latter part of this month.
So it'll be before the date it's needed. You all meet before they need it?
The fourth Tuesday of this month.
Okay. All right. Anything else you're on that?
What is that group, Marshall?
What is that group she said?
The group that you make...
I'm with the American Legion.
American Legion.
We used to be president and chairman. Lively commander.
Commander.
I thought we had been, the insurance...
We did for the fire department, I think, once. Yeah, for fireworks or something.
Webber City.
Webber City, yeah.
Last year, a boy... She wouldn't, you wouldn't have to say it's necessarily the insurance. You just would donate, donate two fifty. Two hundred and fifty, they could use it.
This the first time y'all have done this?
No, someone else had maintained it, and through COVID, they had stopped it. This is the first year that they're starting to back up. Mr. Andrew Davis is the one that's doing all the organizing. I'm just your representative this morning. Is he going to be here?
They used to have it at the Fairview Community Center, but I probably went to the last one. I guess they had before COVID.
I think we should do it.
I think it's not too bad.
Well, entertain a motion if you want to.
I'll make a motion.
Two hundred and fifty dollars, where it comes from, the other contingency fund.
I'll make the motion that we fund it for two fifty.
Mr. Mayne made a motion for the two fifty. Can I have a contingency fund? Do we have a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Misses Second. Any discussion? All three of us said aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And so, done deal.
Appreciate it, y'all.
Well, all right. That's it. I guess the water stuff, I think we discussed that enough about what Mr. Pletzoff brought up. Do we need any other discussion, any more discussion on that? And then Peggy was here. She, anything else on it before we move on?
I'm trying to put her in a work order.
Okay. Is it working?
My VDOT, something happened with my login. I don't know, but I'm trying to work through that. I'm trying to do that.
And then the, Mr. Thalen, been here for the speed thing. I guess we discussed that enough, too. Unless somebody has something else they want to add. All right, next item, item seven, the two thousand twenty-three Baco, which is the Virginia Association of County's annual business meeting. Need voting credentials for the couple that's going. Do we have any discussion? I'm having to start. You want to?
The paperwork is on your tablet. Mike and Stephanie will be attending, so one of them will need to be, or have your authorization for your voting credentials, and then the next one would be an alternate. So just whoever you decide will get that filled out and sent in to Baco.
And what that is, the day, the last day of the meeting, they'll have a business meeting, and you just have, you have the authority to vote there, when you're authorized here, to be the representative and the alternate, but that's all it is, the last day of the meeting. They'll have that business meeting. It lasts about, I don't know, hour or so is on the last, so. Stephanie's pulling toward Mr. Baricki, is having the credentials, so. You're okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
And it'll be the alternate?
I'll be the alternate.
Okay, so we need a motion to do so.
So would Mr. Chairman. All right, I'll say.
All right, Mr. Jeter made a motion. Mr. Tipton's second. Any discussion? All three of us said aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right, next item is the Housing Authority request, the salary increase for the board members. We talked about that a little bit last weekend, or we met with Ms. Arns, and do you look to start what the cost would be?
The Housing Authority has requested that their monthly stop and for their members to attend their meetings be increased from twenty-five dollars per month to fifty dollars per month. Some background on this was in fiscal year fifteen, there was a motion made that all compensation for boards and authorities be reduced in half. And they are requesting this to be put back to fifty dollars per month. That would be an increase of fifteen hundred dollars per year just for the Housing Authority. We have several other boards that you might want to consider as well, if you're going to move one, maybe moving them all. I'm estimating that probably about four thousand dollars additional a year for all the boards that receive the twenty-five dollar per month stop and.
All righty. And I think it should be personally, I'm just the one vote, but I would think that this is an ideal, folks doing that, it'd be a little bit of something to have paid expenses to have those meetings, those people that are doing that. I admire them doing it. They volunteer for the most part to be that, helping them with their gas and stuff, as expensive as it has gone. So anyway, we entertain a motion to do that. Do we have a motion to increase that? And I would say go with all of it with four thousand. Where would that come from, Ms. Arns, if we do?
Just out of the regular budget line items, and then when we amend the budget, maybe December, if we get everything ready for the school, then we'll increase that line item.
Okay.
But right now, we have the funds there to continue until the budget's amended.
Okay. All right, we entertain a motion to do the, for all of it, be four thousand, approximately four thousand dollars to do that first stop and for those people serving on those boards. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right. All right.
If you specify that you're doing fifty dollars.
Okay, all right. And that's from twenty-five to fifty dollars. So with that, uh, Mr. Deere made a motion. Ms. Adams, you second?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Was they all cut free to fifty, I mean, to twenty-five?
They were, yes.
And some completely out.
Yeah, there were some completely taken out. So go back to what it was in two thousand fifteen, which fifty bucks is not a lot to, if you drive very far and something, not very much to compensate for that. Are we have a motion second? All three of us saying aye? Aye, opposed. So motion carried, so we, we get that done. Next item is to ratify a letter of support for the Friends of Southwest Virginia, Ms. Arms.
That's on your tablet as well. Um, I reached out about the Friends of Southwest Virginia requesting a letter of support for a grant that they were applying for. And I heard from the majority of you, so we just need to ratify that letter. It has been sent.
All right, need a motion to, uh, follow through on that and, uh, and to, uh, allow this, the support for this letter. Do we have a motion? Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ricky's second. Any discussion? All three of us saying aye? Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item is item ten, uh, the refund for erosion settlement control permit. This is refund that were, it happened to Starz, if you would, and, uh, I know what it is, I'll let you.
That's on your tablet as well. Um, it was seventy-five dollars for a permit that the project, uh, did not occur, so they requested a refund.
So we have a request to refund this money where the project didn't happen, seventy-five dollars. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Mr. Deere made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton's second. Any discussion? All three of us saying aye? Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item, we discussed some too, the consideration of a new position for a diesel mechanic. And, uh, Bill, you want to come up and, and, and we, we've heard from you already on this, but that way the people love what we're doing here.
As I discussed with each of you separately, uh, one of the, uh, biggest issues we have in our solid waste operations is keeping the trucks running. And those costs of keeping the trucks running has increased in the last couple of years, like everything else. Uh, towards last year, uh, we were over our budget amount for maintenance on those trucks by a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, much of that was taken at the shops over in Kingsport that could do that work. And, uh, and almost being, um, hand tied, that we had to get it fixed, fixed there. So the thought process, and we, we've talked about this before, and this is a position that we've talked about and we should have for many years now, is a diesel mechanic that can, uh, do preventative maintenance and routine maintenance, and maybe repairs on these trucks in-house. Uh, keeping them more with our, uh, in-house where we have them, uh, there, uh, not only the time it takes to do a repair, but, uh, there's been many times that we've had to take it to a shop, and they won't get to it for a month. So our truck is set up for a month. And, uh, the trucks are essential, uh, for our operations. Uh, I had a discussion with somebody the other day about the Nicholsville site, and he asked me, you don't pick his site up every week? I said, sir, we pick it up every day, six days a week. And there's fourteen of them throughout the county. So we're, we have a truck that goes down one day, the trash bins are full that evening, if we're not able to service the site. So having those trucks running is, is essential for the operation that we have in place. Uh, so, uh, I presented you all with the, uh, the document, uh, on the case for a new mechanic. Ms. Arms has with her a, uh, job description, uh, for that position. Two, uh, two thought processes came about, and we were discussing the position. One was, uh, an additional side, stipend on a truck driver that we have that has the capability to do this kind of work, the skill set to do this kind of work, where he stays being a truck driver, but does this as well. Uh, that, that would save us from having to hire, replace that truck driver at that position. Uh, however, there was a concern that, uh, that'd be too much on one person as far as being able to do the work. Uh, I've talked to the staff up there, and there was something to do mechanically every day. So, you know, what do you do when, when, when he would come into work that morning? Is he driving a truck, or is he working on trucks? So, um, and that was a concern with many of you that I spoke with. Uh, the other option is a new position, uh, a diesel mechanic that would be dedicated to, uh, running the shop, the truck shop up there. Doing those maintenance, uh, and repairs that I mentioned, uh, managing, uh, the warranties, uh, making sure that, uh, what work needs to be done is covered by warranty if, if it's available. Tire, uh, management, and, uh, a whole array of things that, uh, would be beneficial to our operation.
The thing about this position, uh, you know, the guy that's, that, uh, that can do this, this kind of work, and it's, uh, it's high dollar, and he hired out, it's expensive, many, many dollars per hour once you do that. And so, uh, anyway, it, uh, I mean, you know, sounds like this would be the way to go. We talked about, you know, doing as a supplement in pay to do this, and, you know, the options we have. So anyway, I'll leave it. You all discuss here what you want to do and how you want to handle this. Any thoughts?
Bill, I appreciate all, you can tell all the work and thoughts you put into this. I really appreciate that. And, uh, when I first read it, as much problem as we have with the diesel and probably hydraulics on those trucks, and the number of trucks we have, I think the, the full-time would be the best way to go. And with the money that, uh, you said we've gone over the budget, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that'll take care of a salary twice.
Twice, yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I'd say, you know, we go ahead and, uh, that would just be my suggestion, we go ahead and, and hire this person.
And Bill, if you would, I, I know it happened, just fixing that in loader through transmission, was it about thirty thousand dollars or something? Normally, that would've been a lot less than that, but cost everything's gone through the roof.
Thirty thousand dollars. And, and since this particular person came on as a truck driver, he's been doing a lot of this work. But, you know, we, we've talked about this, it's not right to hire somebody as a truck driver and ask them to do mechanical work. Uh, but since he's been on board, uh, we have had a lot less issues with the trucks. Including one repair that we were able to do for under four thousand dollars that we got an estimate for, for, that was eleven thousand dollars. So, you know, that's just one, one repair. Uh, so, uh, you know, the, as we go along, uh, this year, I want to ask him to get those estimates for every major repair. Uh, if, if it was something that we would have to take to the shop to get that estimate compared to what we actually had to spend on it. And, uh, my guess, at the end of the year, you're, you're going to see that this more than paid for itself.
One other thing to, to think about, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, our HVAC person, he has been pulled away from his job to work on the trucks at times.
Quite a bit, Mr. Ricky.
So that'll, that'll give, that'll relieve him, because he has over a hundred HVAC.
How many does he have? Hundred and twenty?
Oh, a hundred and forty to a hundred and sixty.
Wow.
HVAC units that he has maintained, and, you know, just keeping the filters changed is, is a, a task every, every month. But a lot of days, he, uh, is working on those trucks. And this would keep him from having to do that.
We're kind of killing two birds with one stone with, with if we hire a full-time diesel mechanic.
And Bill, if my memory is certainly correct, we had a, a truck driving job there. We eliminated one time too, so. We had, yeah, that's been a few years ago. We actually did that, so. We'll be back where we were as far as the number of people, and so we eliminate, eliminate that job, and so, anyway, that will go back to where we were, where we want to be as far as the number of people. I thought I was correct on that. All right. I'm for it too, but anyway, I leave it to the board here. You all decide what we need to do, and what you want to do, and how you want to word your motion if you want to do that. And again, will this be, this increase, uh, as, you'll do it as a supplement, or do we, how do you, you know?
Just a real quick question, Bill. I mean, you have, I know to operate, uh, mechanic and supplies, you gotta have tools. So they have a setup of tools that, or you have to?
We have, uh, a, a, a truck shop with, with a number of tools. And I, I spoke with, uh, uh, the candidate as well. And there will be specialized tools that come about throughout the year, uh, of the years, uh, that we'll, we'll purchase. Uh, I'm not asking to go out and buy every, everything that we'd have to have. Uh, I did purchase a computer system and laptop where he can read the codes and reset, and we, I don't know if you know about DEF, uh, you have to re-gen a truck, and he's been able to do that, uh, with that, with, uh, computer system. So as we go along, there'll, there'll be tools, but it won't be a, you know, I'm not asking a hundred thousand dollars to buy tools.
You used to have a mechanic before. Did you used to have a mechanic before?
No, no, we, we've not had a mechanic.
Well, let me bring up one, one more thing that, that might happen. I, I, I think I heard that if we have a full-time mechanic, our county fleet, not, not sheriff's office or, or anybody else, but our county fleet can be serviced and worked on there.
Sure. The, the public works vehicles, I'll put that in the job description, uh, but then we have a number of oil vehicles that, uh, uh, that we could service, like oil changes and things like that. Uh, I'm not sure about if we have a transmission or, you know, something like that.
That's specialized.
Yeah.
But that, those go outside right now to another person, so we'll tally them out anyhow. I, I think it's going to be a big savings.
Be a win.
And I wouldn't mind to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the hiring of a full-time again.
And I'll second that motion.
Do we, were that any different than that, uh, to where, where the money would come from? How, will this going to affect immediately?
Yeah, I mean, maybe say October, whatever Monday is.
Make a retroactive to October the first of this month. I'd be, I'd be okay with that. And do it as a supplement to what we're talking about doing as a full-time, all right. We talked about that in our, our two-person meeting we had, and so be a full-time position, all right?
I think you'd adopt a new job description.
Okay.
If it has a new position.
Do we need to do that first, and then, uh, allow it to happen, or we do it all at once?
I think you could do it all together.
So you have that, uh, job description in front of you, and, uh, show them what it would be, so we can adopt that along with the motion to, to hire a full-time, uh, mechanic. So do you want?
I'll amend my motion to, uh, add the, uh, job description of a diesel truck.
That'll work.
Very good.
We have a motion, it's seconded.
I'll second.
Okay, so Ms. Adams, second. All right, any other discussion?
So that's going to be effective October one?
I think it should be retroactive to October first. He's probably doing the work as we speak.
Right, yeah.
Does your, the pay periods go from October first to the first of the month then?
Yeah.
Okay, so that'll be easier on the, on payroll to do that, go back and make it up. All right, we've had a motion second. All three of us saying aye? Aye, anybody opposed? I'm glad that you're unanimous, and, uh, so, B-Dot, you have, like Mr. Ricky said, done a good job with this. In our discussion, we had a two-person discussion with it before the end of this meeting, and so I, I'm glad that we're doing that. I think it's a good move.
Thank you, boys.
Thank you. All right. Next item is the county attorney item, Ms. Kate, we have anything, boys?
I wanted to ask your agency authority to advertise a public hearing to update the transient occupancy tax ordinance. It is old, uh, eighty-seven or so, eighty-five. That's when we adopted it, and it's not, we've not had any reason to update it, but now there's some changes in the code that it needs to be modernized a little bit, so we can have that public hearing in November. What is the transient occupancy tax at? Two percent when people stay in the county and then breakfast and other places that they pay. The commissioner keeps up with that, and, um, the tax, that tax goes to the treasure collection.
All right, authorize Ms. Kate with to do this, uh, public hearing. She will, uh, have it, uh, in the type to advertise some. Any, do we have a motion to do so?
I'll make the motion.
All right, Ms. Deere made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Tipton's second. Any discussion? All three of us saying aye? Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Okay, anything else?
No, that's okay.
Next item is the county administrator item, to do the claims, Ms. Arms.
The general fund balance after the October claims is four million, seven hundred forty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-six dollars and forty-three cents. We are above where we were, um, this time, the last two years. As far as claims, you have a summary sheet, um, total claims for the month will be six hundred ninety-nine thousand, two hundred fourteen dollars and fifty-six cents. We had early sets for the month totaling two hundred twenty-one thousand, four eighty-one fifty-three. And this time, you've got two pages of over five thousand dollars. And a lot of this is where you gave, um, the volunteer fire departments an additional twelve thousand dollars in this budget year from ARPA funding. So that's seven departments at twelve thousand dollars. Those are on the list. Um, Nicholsville Rescue Squad got ten thousand dollars, um, for payroll. And some other larger ones. Vacor Insurance was forty-two thousand, two oh three fifty. Uh, Waste Management, um, to haul the trash this month was forty-nine thousand, seven twenty-two eighty-nine. Scott County Life Saving Crew, twenty thousand dollars. Appalachian Juvenile Commission, their quarterly payment was sixty-eight, seven fifty. And then Scott County Health Department quarterly payment was sixty-three thousand, nine eighty-nine twenty-five. Planning District One, thirty-eight thousand, eight seventy-two thirty-eight. So a lot of the quarterly payments came out this time, as well as some fire department contributions. So just need approval to pay the claims for the month totaling six hundred ninety-nine thousand, two hundred fourteen dollars and fifty-six cents.
So, all right. Towne Gate City, uh, they're on that first page, seven thousand, four seventy-nine sixty-seven. Do you know what that is for? Line side you did.
August, L-S-A-L. No, I'm not sure. I will find out for you.
I'm just curious. That's okay. Don't, uh, I'm just saying that I'm not, I'm sure it's been there before, right, so. Did you make a motion, Mr. Tipton?
I did.
Mr. Tipton made a motion to pay the bills. Uh, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Deere's second. Any discussion? All three of us saying aye? Aye, opposed. Motion carried. So we are, if you look at that bar graph, we're better than we've been in a while as far as our general fund, most likely been there right now, so. I'm sure taxes are coming in too, people paying, and so it's, it's coming up, so. All right, anything else?
I just have a couple of things under miscellaneous. I just wanted to mention a couple of things, um, regarding the Longson Pine Regional Industrial Facilities Authority that myself and Mr. Kilgore are members of. And of course, this is a regional group for economic development, and that also includes the counties of Lee, Scott, Wise, Dickinson, and the city of Norton. Um, there's a project we have called Project Thoroughbred. Um, we had an announcement in August for two and a half million dollars from abandoned mine land economic revitalization. Uh, the project will reclaim a historic coal loading facility and turn it into a grain processing, storage, and distribution terminal. The specialty grains, um, that will be at the terminal will be used in craft, in the craft beverage market, and the project is located in Norton. And then Project Intersection, um, is a large project that we're involved with. If you, um, are traveling on twenty-three toward Wise- If you are traveling on 23 toward Wise, you'll see the EarthLink building is now under construction over on the right. That whole property there is Project Intersection. The EarthLink building, like I said, is under construction. It's going to be a 28,000 square foot building and should be completed in the spring of 2024. EarthLink will employ 285 people. Project Intersection is a total of 200 acres and it's being marketed as commercial and light industrial sites. There are three other site pads that are almost complete. The road and curving gutter is complete. All sites have electrical, water, supernatural gas, and broadband available. So that's, Rifa projects that have been announced and are doing very well. We are in revenue sharing with these projects. So once these get going and especially Project Intersection with these other sites, when industries come in, Scott County will benefit from those as revenue sharing projects. And I also just wanted to make mention that the Regional Improvement Commission has divided the casino proceeds for the first year. And our check totaled $625,470. And that has been received and deposited. And of course, you did budget how you wanted those funds spent in the budget process. So I just wanted to make note of a couple of things to bring up this morning about the regional projects that we are involved with. That's all I have.
Good news. That casino money, back in the day, I talked to when Senator Carrick was there, that once they get up and going over there and get the hotels built and all that, which we'll take any part of that, but it'd be about a person a million dollars a year from it. So that's hopefully, as they get bigger, then the county will reap more from that. So anyway, that's part of the regional approach to things. I mean, it may be like this Project Intersection, if you can buy that intersection over there at Norton, it's a 58 and 23 comes together, it'll be, it'll help us too. It will. All right, anything else?
That's all I have.
Nothing, nothing to vote on.
Could I ask one question and make one comment?
Yes.
Regional projects are very important to us. We talked about that before. And if I'm out of line asking this question at this time, I apologize, Frieda, but the 2% raise for teachers, we've not heard much about that yet, have we?
We haven't, and the Department of Education's website has not been updated with this new amendment. And I talked to Mr. Ferguson last week and he doesn't have the details either. He just has, you know, like an overview, but he's been watching the DOE site as well. But at this time, that's not been updated. And I actually checked this morning and it's not there yet.
Will that go into effect first of the year?
Thurs is January, yes.
January.
Constitutional officers get, also get 2% and Thurs is in December. But school staff is January 1st.
Okay, Lana hadn't heard anything through DSS either, so I was just curious about that.
Yeah, I'm not sure when Thurs, Thurs will probably be December too, I would think. Yeah.
The thing about that is, I mean, they decide that at the state, but the localities end up paying a lot of it. So anyway, they decide there for us, but you got to do it, so anyway.
Yeah, that's why we'll probably, if we get all the DOE information in, we'll look at amending the budget in December if everything lines up and they get all that posted. We'll know what our numbers are. Because the school system will have to amend their budget. We have to amend ours. And that's what we'll put this position and that $4,000 for the boards and commissions fees in the new budget.
All these extra things were getting thrown in. That's where these regional projects that you just mentioned will be more and more important in the future. Get the, you know, for us to be able to look at taxes a little bit better.
It may come from Richmond, but we, the localities end up carrying most of the burden.
That's right.
All right. Anything else before we have Mr. Francis come up? Did you have anything else? I didn't ask you, that's all you have. All right, I'm smoking.
You did ask me.
I'm sure I got everything. If I hear something, that's all right. Don't leave you out. All right. The next item is a report from our recreation. Mr. Francis is here, so if you would. And we do have one item for closed session, so we'll, we're not through when he finishes one item for closed session.
Good morning. Good to see everybody. Y'all moving quick. I barely got in here.
Yeah, you're all right.
I was watching live. I was like, oh, man, they're moving fast.
Moving quick.
Which mine will be short sleeves. Well, I saw you all in July and had a lot of info for you there. So it was kind of a quick turnaround. And I apologize in advance of my allergies. On notice with you all, I didn't have any in spring. This fall, everybody, it's like right now.
Yes, I agree.
Spring and summer was nothing. So I'm sniffing and coughing. I apologize.
I used to have allergies, you know, after my transplant. I don't have any, but I would never recommend that.
Right.
Recommend transplant.
Yeah, that's like, I had COVID and my breathing was better after COVID.
Well, I mean, my brain, it was nothing in spring. And right now it just started out.
Yeah.
Before Derek gets started, let me let you know what that payment was on your claims. And that is a check that the treasurer used to pay, but now where we have munis, we're doing all checks. And that was the local sales tax split that we received from Virginia. So that was just sending that out to the town. So that's what that was.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll get started and all I'll say about Keith and Royal Park, Dutchville Community Park. Over the years, it's both been upgraded and improved, especially in Dutchville Community Park this past year. Still got some stuff there, but we made a big, a big jump there in getting it where it needs to be. So it's in really good shape. I'll hop down on the rec side. As you can see on the screen, I want to talk about my Otis Road State Farm Youth Volleyball. Another great turnout, about 120 kids in it. That's about what we. Hundred twenty to hundred fifty is kind of our number. That's been going on forever. It's a great league. And I'll go through and show you some pictures of the kids playing. Don't make fun of my camera. I did upgrade my camera. I've got, every time I have somebody help me, they're always looking at my camera like, what's this? Of course, it's younger kids that probably have never used a camera. They're used to phone cameras, you know. So sometimes I hand them the camera like, what is this? I'm like, I'm not that old, but I guess. I guess that means I am that old.
Yeah, we are.
But I do want to mention, so we did this and this is a Saturday at Rycov High School. And I want to thank my coaches. That's a lot of, I have some great coaches. I have some coaches that have been doing it for many, many years. I have some coaches that did it for their child and now they're coaching their grandchild. And I have some coaches that played in my league and now they're coaching. So it's a, it's a cyclical thing and we have some great coaches. That really makes the league. But I want to talk about, so right there you see, that's pretty full, you know, bleachers. So the schools host me for practices and for the games, obviously. And I do want to thank them and kind of as a way to show them my thanks. Like that Saturday at Rycov, the Rycov High School volleyball team, they were at the game. They did a concession. So they got, they keep that money. It's about four to $500 every Saturday. That does kind of help them while they're helping maybe. So every time we're at a school, we let either, you know, a group or a sports team or a, you know, academic team, there's, there's been all kinds of teams that have done that. It's a little bit of a long day for them, but it's made for the programs. There's the little ones. Let's see, this is, I'll go back. You know, that's my fifth, is seventh grade group. And then you'll go down here. When I say the little ones, that's my second through fourth grade group. And believe it or not, they play some volleyball first week. It's always a lot of serves. And everybody's like, oh, gosh. And then by the end of the year, they're volume quite a bit. People, people get pretty excited here. It tickles us. There's Aiski High School, so.
That's good.
We bounce around different schools. We even used to have some churches before Webber City Baptist Church. They've been great to work with for practices and games, so. There's just, I always like to give them great sportsmanship, you know. Volleyball's pretty calm. I love it. It's a, it's a fun season for us. I believe that's all the pictures I've got, so. That's just some pictures. Actually, those pictures are a little bit better than that screen. It looks, my camera doesn't look that good. But that's all I've really got on the rec side. Down here on the golf course side, I know I brought a lot of information to y'all back in, I think it was July when I was before you. This will be not very much information, but it's all good information. I know I talked and said last year was our highest revenue year since 2011. So that was great, you know. Well, just starting off this year, August, or July, August, September, we are at a cra- it's crazy, 60, 50% increase over last year. Our July, August, September was probably busier than any time I can ever remember being there. Brad's been there longer than me. He says he's never seen it that busy. I know he worked one Saturday, just a normal Saturday, you know, a tournament. And he was out of golf carts by 10:00 AM. And he said that's never happened before. He had people waiting. And that happens a lot. And that Saturday was crazy. He said 10:00 AM I was out. I was done. You know, the course was full, so. It's staying now, of course, now September with football season, it's still just normal trickle down. But our numbers are just, I think in September, I might be off a little bit. By September 9th, we'd already done more than we did the whole last year in September. So it's just staying, the golf's staying, staying hot. Of course, it's kind of tripping out just by weather, but it's, you know, that, those three months were insane. That July, when I saw it, it just was, it was crazy. So we got a good thing going there. I know, Mr. Drew, you've asked before about memberships. I finally, after like many, many years, have that nailed down. I was waiting till it was good news. No. We used to hover around 20, 25 members now, a long time ago in the nineties. You know, they got to 100, 120 members when golf was really, really hot. Right now, we're about 50 plus, so.
Good.
And a lot of, a lot of new, those 20, 25 have been the ones who've been there forever. We've got a lot of new, a lot of people from, you know, even out of town, a lot of people that have just started playing golf, a lot of young people. That's, it's been a big shift there, a big change. So we're up, we're over 50 members now, so. The rental room, I know I talked about it, but I just looked before I came and every Saturday and Sunday, October, November's already booked for the rental. And then there's actually some weekdays too there, but it's stayed packed. I think people finally found that's a relatively inexpensive option to not mess up your house for parties and stuff. And that's what a lot of people use it for, you know, hey, it's a, you've got plenty of parking and you're not, you know, having people run through your house. So I think people have actually, I think it's finally out, that hey, that's a good place to have.
And it's a spectacular view.
Yes, very great view. You go to the Fall, which Fall is my favorite.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, gosh, Fall is, I might even take it for granted looking at that every day, but Fall's definitely my favorite time there. But that room, it's crazy. It's staying booked, so. And lastly, I know I showed you all pictures of the C U project I did with Scott Gerald and how successful it was. And it was really a good investment of the money to result ratio was great. So we plan to work with him again and do that again this year. Hit some spots we didn't hit, do it a little different direction. Still use the same seat because it donated and it graded, but so really just trying to keep that momentum and keep that course looking great, the more people comes, so. Good news. I mean, I know it's short sleeve and all, but the revenue thing is crazy. I think, I think last year, the same time, I want to say it was about $25,000, $26,000. This year it's $40,000. So that's a pretty big jump. Part July almost took care of it almost by itself. I think it was $16,000 or $17,000 July at the wood. It was wild. I mean, we were just packed, so it's going, it's going, got a good thing going there, so.
Sounds like you may have the potential where you can get into, you know, if you have next, you know, increase each year, you know, that'd be a great thing.
Oh, gosh. Well, every time I come, I'm like, man, we're doing these increases. I'm, man, it's a lot to taper off. But it's kind of just, I mean, it's been a great start for this fiscal year. I know that, so. And I think I talked to you all about a lot of that was a lot of courses, I think, have gotten greedy and really raised their prices. I think we can definitely look at going up for various reasons on the golf cart just now. Wouldn't cause an issue. It's probably needed to go up a dollar. That's something we can address before next. Next, what I call golf season, as the golf season ends right now, so.
Have you had a chance to work on your deck quotes?
I've not, no. I've got that on my calendar. I think it's for Monday, I think, but I've not looked at that yet. And you did want me to get both right, wood and the composite, so. Yeah, that decks, we've tried to do small pair repairs with smaller pairs, smaller pairs. I think we're at a point now where it's, it's been a long enough, we may have to go the whole thing, so.
You know, something, which the view up there, there's nothing else like it. I mean, it's amazing. Is, I don't know, and I've always thought about, you know, doing this, which it's not happened. But to have some kind of a small convention center up there, I always thought it'd be great to have something bigger than we've gone. And the use of, like you said, you're booked up now through, you know, that period of time to rent. But I think that's something a little bit bigger, a little bit nicer, and you can have even some bigger events there. With the golf course tied into, even the view, I mean, they got their convention center tied into the golf course, you know. So people will come to play in. And then if you have something there, that's just an incentive to, you know, make it even bigger than what it is.
Yeah. Where our county lives, we had to probably go vertical than that. You know, we are limited on space, so. But people have had all kinds of stuff there. Like they've had some like little consignment shop sales. They've had, you know, birthday parties, course weddings. I mean, you name it. It's been up there, you know, bands, parties, musicians have performed up there, so. Local musicians, but yeah, there's been about anything you can imagine up there. Some people decorate too. That's why, obviously, some people decorate. I mean, it's insane how it looks. It looks beautiful when they do it. So they've looked at a long time never do it, so.
Something before you came on board, I think, the Town of Gate City wanted to put a water tank up there. It was a good deal for everybody, but the way that, that was purchased in 1978, it was through a grant. And forever it has to be used for something recreation. And so.
Yes.
And so anyway, we, we weren't even allowed to put a, to change that much, a half acre or something to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Was you there then?
Yes, I was. That was, it was looking like, you know, good news for everybody, but then they were like, I mean, they got involved. And I get it from the state of, you know, the state conservation, recreation department. And it was very, I mean, you know.
It was a good deal for everybody.
Yeah.
But the way it was purchased through that grant, you couldn't do it with.
It's very heavily protected, yeah, for, for outdoor recreation, so.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Anyone, any questions?
Beautiful job.
All right. Anything else before we go into comments? Mr. Jeter, have anything?
Yes, I've got one thing that's been brought up to me and it's the Treasury Office. They're working from 8:30 to 4:30 and then they close for dinner. And during this tax season, I think that's putting a pinch on people coming and paying their taxes. In other words, they're just open seven hours a day and they're closed for dinner during tax season. And that kind of makes it rough for people to pay their taxes. But it gets down close to tax season, they'll be lying plumb to the parking lot again, I guess. I just wanted to mention that. I don't know what we can do about it or maybe.
Probably nice to be of the treasurer to make any changes like that.
They mentioned to Ms. Mitzi that she should stay open during dinner and at least work eight hours a day during tax season.
And they sent notices out early to have that money, you know, revenue coming in. I mean, that makes sense to me too.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Mr. Tipton?
I'm good. I appreciate the staff, all of you. And it's been able to serve with you and just being able to be here today after.
After what you went through last night, yeah?
Yeah.
Mr. Herron is not here, so the public can look. He has accepted a job as teaching. He's not here because he wants to be, but anyway, it's taken away. He'll still be on, on the board until December 31st, but anyway, that's why he is not here to speak up for him. Mr. Brick, you have anything?
I wanted to mention that this Saturday, October the 6th, Man's Law up in Fort Blackmore is going to donate all their profits, all their proceeds to social services, Department of Social Services, to go toward foster program. Also to the Hope House and to the school at Fort Blackmore. It's going to be divided between three different places. So right now, they've got their apples, potatoes, all their vegetables, everything on Saturday will go to those groups. So that's great. So. Try to get out and get you some, some stuff. If you see Hootie, if you see David Mann or Judy, either one, they're the ones doing it. So brag on them. That's great.
Now, I saw that on their Facebook post on their, they're doing that. And I'm glad you mentioned it, because it needs to be known, people will watch this and not go and buy something. All the profit from that will go to three entities.
And I'd rather eat their streaked meat than bacon. That stuff is great. And they sell it in big slabs, so I'd go get any one of them.
I may have to go buy a piece of that.
It is good.
Don't tell your heart doctor that.
Anything else? Anything?
That's all, Paddy.
All right. That's it.
I don't have anything.
All right. Who's that?
I'll go off of what Darrell said, you know, and I just encourage the public that's watching to contact treasurer's office because this board cannot dictate the hours that she's, that the treasurer's office is open. So I'd encourage you as citizens to call and request her to extend her hours during this tax season. So I'd encourage you as citizens to call and request her to extend her hours during this tax season. Because I, I agree, seven hours a day is not reasonable, in my opinion, during tax season. But thank the staff for all they do and I appreciate everybody and.
All right.
Did a good job.
All that I have, myself and Mr. Brick and Mr. Tipton is on the Glen Whisco Board. And so A R C money has come available to other counties and Scott County doesn't get any. And a reason being, and I, and I don't know, that we're not distressed, which is a good thing, you know? And they set our connections to where we're close to Kingsport, the people, their salaries and stuff. All they look, they look at all of that and you become distressed. There's only four or five counties that are and we're not one of them. Part of the county is distressed, but it has to, you know, either the whole, the whole county is or the whole county is not, and we're not, which is a good thing. But still, it was 700,000 Winston Projects in Lee County, 700,000 to Wise County. And the A R C, which Appalachian Regional Commission decides that. And so I'd like to see the money come. I'm glad we're not distressed. I am. We're blessed that we're not. But anyway, I just, you know, we're trying to figure some way. They, they sent the explanation to us why we're not. And so it's kind of a good thing and for the most part, but then as far as those federal dollars we're not getting because we're not distressed. Like I said, it's, it's good and bad, but I guess for the most part it's good. But anyway, it cost us money, regretfully, we do not get because of it. So anyway, I just wanted to make mention of that. I don't know if anything can be said by it or not. The people need to know that Wise County gets something, or Lee County gets it, or Dixon County, Buchanan County. Well, that's the counties that are distressed, I think, that are considered distressed. And so anyway, it's good, good and bad, I guess. But for the most part, you know, we do not qualify because of the fact that we're not distressed. All right. We do have one item for closed session. So I need a motion to, y'all take a break first and then.
Yes, please.
We'll do, we'll do this and then we'll take a break between this and closed session. All right. We need a motion going into closed session. Second by somebody?
I'll second.
Mr. Brick, you second. This board hereby enters into closed.
has convened to close meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and according to the provision of Virginia Freedom of Information Act and rest section two point two nine three seven one two of the code of Virginia requires a certification by the Scott County Board of Supervisors if such a closed meeting was conducted conformly with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Scott County Board of Supervisors hereby continue certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, due which the certification resolution applies to all associated business. Public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were held, were heard, discussed, or considered by the Scott County Board of Supervisors. We need a motion.
Mr. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Brickie, second. We have a recorded vote. Ms. Darn, if you will.
Mr. Jeter?
Yes.
Mr. Tipton?
Mr. Herron?
Mr. Brickie?
Yes.
Mr. Mann?
Yes.
Ms. Hood?
Yes.
Ms. Addington?
Yes.
All right. We have done that. We're back in open session. One thing we need to do is...
Somebody shut up.
Somebody, gentlemen. Entertained a motion to proceed with an unnamed company to locate in the northeastern part of Scott County, and that Scott County will support this endeavor. And is that all I need to say?
Authorized.
Authorized that the county administrator and the Scott County Board chair to sign all necessary documentation. Do we have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Mr. Brickie made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Jeter, second. End discussion. All of our votes, say a aye?
Aye.
Opposed. So motion carried. And hopefully that will happen. All right. Anything else before we close? We're two hours into the meeting. Pretty good.
Next meeting will begin when?
November first.
November first. All right. So with that, we will adjourn to November first.
Thanks for the mechanic.
That's gonna be a good...